Six oh three, Mr. Marine, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, Establishment of Coram.
Renee Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevades.
Here.
Ralph Duran.
Here.
Mayor Elia Garcia.
Here.
Victor Perez.
Here.
Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Here.
Mayor, we have a coram.
Do we have any speakers?
Yes, we do. Miriam Cruz. Ms. Cruz, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Just put candy in my mouth and swallow it. I'll put it on the side. Okay, a couple of things, let's see, where do I want to start? It looks like maybe the speeding problem on Stockyard is going to get resolved. I'm hoping that it's going to be on the next agenda, so I'm hoping that the city council members that I haven't spoken to will look out for that and hopefully just keep that eye out for that since you guys know I have been coming to the meetings for about a year and a half now complaining about the speeding on Stockyard. The second thing I wanted to mention was there is a property along Stockyard that has, it seems to be toxophene in the soil. Now toxophene is a certain toxin, I'm not going to go into the details because I'm not a scientist, but it is an issue that the TCQ is looking into. Now, doing my research, making some calls, I found out that the city of El Paso is contracted by TCQ to enforce state ordinances or state rules so that individuals, property owners, whoever, make sure that they're keeping, they're staying in compliance with whatever state laws are supposed to be doing. I thought that this is a fascinating idea, that maybe potentially, I just mentioned it to Mr. Choa just now, that the city of Socorro can do this, since especially we don't have any environmental ordinances in our code. I think that we should include some, but that might take a while, it might take too much time. So maybe for the time being, the city can look into potentially partnering up with TCQ. And the last thing I'll mention, and just in case I don't get a chance, in case the agenda item gets removed or whatever, is agenda item number twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty, twenty-four. I hope I wrote twenty-four. I'm totally against it. We as constituents sometimes are not able to meet with some of you. Some of us don't have the luxury, like I do, to set up meetings with Mr. Rolarte, to set up meetings with Mr. Renee, to set up meetings with my representative, Mr. Nevades. And this is the only time that we get to talk to you all and to share our concerns and our opinions. I would not like to be limited to two minutes, and I would not like to be limited to the number of agenda items. I can see why, potentially why this was placed on the agenda. I do believe that some people maybe step outside the realm of what they bought an agenda item or what they should be coming to counsel for, but maybe that needs to be addressed rather than limiting us or constituents to what we do.
Ms. Cruz, thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
David Estrada. Mr. Estrada, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is David Estrada, hello everybody. I wanted to talk about item number fifteen and number thirty-five. Item number fifteen is regarding Vista Bonita subdivision for final plat approval. And then item number thirty-five is talking about vacating the streets on the adjacent subdivision, which is Rancho Miraval. The last time we were here, we talked about getting something in writing about what would be the process to achieve the vacating of the streets. And there is something in writing, and I want to make sure that everybody has seen it. It's not on the agenda, it's another inter-office memo that's out there. We don't believe that the items on the memo and the outline of what you're asking the residents to do in order to vacate the streets. I'm thinking that you're placing too much burden on the residents of Rancho Miraval and what you're asking them to do on this memo in order for us to achieve vacating those streets. Now, that's on item number thirty-five, and that's way at the end, but yet approving the final plat for Vista Bonita is item number fifteen, so it's way before. So I'm going to ask you to please consider moving item number thirty-five for discussion before item number fifteen, because those two go hand in hand. That's all for now, thank you.
Irene Montero. Ms. Montero, tiene tres minutos. Antonio Terán. Mr. Terán, you have three minutes.
Buenas tardes. Este también es sobre lo mismo, sobre las luces, que realmente esa calle es una, eso es como una privada, que por donde entran tienen que salir, y ahí en esa privada pues hay dos calles, o sea, la Vista de Allá, la Ernest, y la Klepi. Entonces, en la noche, es una boca de robo. Entra gente que no sabemos de qué, a qué procede, a dónde proceden, y quiénes son, y no sabemos a qué entran a la calle. Y como es una calle pública pues no podemos decirle, oiga pues, a qué viene, ¿verdad? Pero, digo, es para mayor seguridad de todos los vecinos, de nosotros mismos, todos tenemos familia, y ha habido varios robos ahí. Es, pues sí, sobre la luz que creemos que, para así la pueden traer. Gracias.
Rubén Montero. Mr. Montero, you have three minutes.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Rubén Montero. Le doy gracias por el pavimento que ya nos pusieron, ya normalmente saltan la luz, pero ya haciendo eso, ya se arregló todo el proyecto que necesitamos, gracias.
Tony Valdez. Mr. Valdez, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi too, I'm here for item number thirty-five. I am a resident of Rancho Marival Estates, and also I am concerned about the memo that just came out. I was reading it, and it does place a lot of burden on the residents of this particular area. We've been fighting against this particular situation that's going on, where the streets want to be opened for the public to come in through those streets. And it, we've been here several times, we've presented, you know, PowerPoint presentations regarding that, and why we believe that we should not allow the streets to be open. That is one of my main concerns, and that is why I'm here. I want to make sure that we are treated fairly, and not just the people that are trying to invest in these properties, because yeah, it is important that the investments be made, but what also is important is that the people that are living there right now be well represented, not just the investors themselves. So we want to be well represented, that's one of my other concerns. Thank you very much.
Bernie Salsedo. Mr. Salsedo, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Thank you. You all know who I am. I've been coming here for two and a half years, better part of two and a half years. I'm trying to reiterate what Mr. Estrada and Mr. Valdez just mentioned. We've been working at it so hard, and now you throw a curve at us saying that in order for us to vacate the streets, that we have to have an HOA. And that's the recommendation being made by the attorneys. That's the decision that you need to vote on. And protect us and help us, we are part of this community, and we have been for a long, long time. I've been there for over thirty years, and this just seems to me like it's just a, like pulling teeth. Mr. Rodriguez, you were at my house when this originally originated, and you assured me, says, "Be patient, Mr. Salsedo, we will work this out." As of tonight, our hands are tied, because you have thrown something else at us that we have to have an HOA, otherwise it's a no-go. Why would we want to create an HOA with streets that have been there for thirty years that are going to be needing some repairs? We don't have a million dollars to resurface roads within our forty residents. Let's be logical. We're paying taxes, this week everybody just got a note in the mail and raised our taxes, an additional six hundred dollars in my case, yearly. I'm mortgage-free, but I have to maintain and save up eight hundred dollars a month just to live where I live for taxes only. I think you know where I'm coming from. I've been up here several times. Now we don't have any representation, we need to do the representation ourselves, because Ms. Colon lives in our neighborhood, and she has been excluded from representing us. I am a taxpayer, I need representation for this community. That is wrong, think about that. What suggestions do you have, where do I go?
Mr. Salsedo, your time is up.
Thank you so much.
May we be the taller speakers?
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
I just, I just...
For item number thirty-five and fifteen.
Yeah, we're not...
Not for public comment.
Mayor, I understand, I'm just sad to hear that they don't have representation. Yes, they do, they have myself or any member of council, especially Ms. Viallo that lives in that district. I understand that, you know, she can put, that she can put her personal, you know, agendas aside and advocate for her constituents. One of the things that I also am saddened, that time and time again, I tell our constituents, "Oh, we pay taxes, we're taxpayers, everybody's a taxpayer here in the city of Socorro, I'm a taxpayer."
Mayor, excuse me, I need to interrupt, you're not supposed to deliberate this. But we didn't raise any taxes though, that's it.
Item number five, presentation by Miguel Hernandez, Executive Director from El Paso County Housing Authority. If I can entertain a motion to postpone this item, unfortunately they can't make it today, but they will be here at the next meeting.
So moved.
Renee Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevades.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Just as a reminder, please speak into the microphone, yes.
Do we have a motion for a consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve, second.
Renee Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevades.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah, could we move item thirty-five up, so we can tackle this next? Oh, it's in exec, never mind. No, 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 I resent my motion.
Mr. Duran.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to move up item number fourteen, twenty-three, twenty-one, and twenty, and item number thirty-five is an executive session, we can't move that up.
Well, yes, we can, but...
Ms. Vialos.
Mayor, we can move item, we can make, take it out of consent agenda?
Executive?
Yeah, we can take it out of...
I'm sorry, yes, number, item thirty-five?
Just do those first, and then we'll...
I also would like to move up number nineteen.
Okay, so can you repeat the numbers again?
Fourteen, twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty, and nineteen.
I think nineteen we're going to address, all right, yeah, we can do nineteen. Nineteen. Nineteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So give it, can you give me the numbers in order again, please?
Fourteen, twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty, and nineteen.
Renee Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevades.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, discussion and action regarding Mission Trail sponsorship.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We did speak briefly at the last council meeting regarding the sponsorship for the Mission Trail. Council did request staff to meet with the Mission Trail. Here before you is President Shelby McQueen, as well as their treasurer, Diego Valdez. In your backup, you did receive their budget for the proposed items that they're asking funding for this year, which council did approve at the last meeting. We went ahead and discussed and brought it back to council in order to discuss any further actions or any questions that you might have had with their budgets. Staff did meet with them and provide recommendations regarding strategies, different types of avenues on getting more fundraising capabilities, as well as looking for capital instead of advertising sources with their funding.
Hello, Mayor and Councilman, my name is Shelby McHugh. I grew up here in the Lower Valley, was a high graduate. My family is, are relatively newcomers, we've only been here since about nineteen thirty-three. But I am very appreciative of this opportunity to thank this city for sponsoring us. The Don Juan de Onate caravan came right through this area, changed North America forever. It's created a vibrant and a call for part of our history, and we're proud to celebrate it. And we're most proud to have you, the city of Socorro, as one of our partners and sponsors. So thank you very much.
They're able to answer any questions that city council might have at this time, or provide any feedback?
Mr. Perez.
I have a question very quickly. On, you have, on page two, and just for clarification, under utilities, we have black tie sanitation appearing once, and then we have black tie sanitation appearing again on the third, on the fourth page.
So each of those pages is a different dated event? So they do Danzas Españolas twice a year? They may make the same budget, but it's just a different date?
Okay, I apologize, my mistake.
No, it's okay.
Any motions?
Motion to approve, second.
Renee Rodriguez. Renee Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevades.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number twenty-three, discussion and action to direct staff on creating a budget and recommendation for future paving and streetlights.
It was twenty-three.
Yeah, I heard twenty, and then...
It was twenty-three.
It was black?
Yes. Twenty and nineteen, in that order.
No, no.
We did fourteen.
So on item twenty-three, I went ahead and posted this item on the agenda, because I understand that there's constituents coming up to each of us, and we each want to make sure that we're listening to our constituents and making sure that we're listening to their needs. However, I think that it's going to be difficult for each of us to be putting a different street or a different light, and I think we need a long-term plan so that we can have a systematic approach to making sure that the needs of the whole community are covered. So this item was posted in order to direct staff, so they can come up and return to us with a plan, with a budget first of all, and then after that with how we're going to approach, which streets are going to be paved first, and which lights are going to be placed first.
Mr. Duran.
The whole city needs lighting, we all need our streets paved. I think we need to, rather than a group of people coming in and requesting one street be paved, we do have, we did have a plan for paving all our streets in Socorro. We need to go back and get back on that plan. And the worst ones get paved first, the darkest streets get the lighting first. But we cannot, we have to have a budget for it. We cannot continue just taking out of our general fund, because that will bankrupt the city. If we have a budget, all of us live on a budget. I can't go out and just buy a new car because I want to, all of you can't either. You know, we all have bills to pay, same the city, the city does too. We have a budget, and we need to follow that budget, because we're just like you all. If we go out and keep spending money the way we are, for one street or another street, the lights here, lights there, we need to have a comprehensive plan. We need to have staff go back and find which streets are the darkest ones, and those will be the first to have lighting. We need staff to go back and find out which streets are dirt streets. We have people in Socorro that don't even have water. We have a lot of problems, we cannot solve them all at once. We cannot just sit here and keep spending money that we don't have. We need to go back, and we need to identify who needs it first. We need to go back, and then we need to tackle those problems one at a time. And I don't think the way we're doing it is going to serve our city in the best interest. We need to go back, and I think I'd like to, do we have a motion yet?
No.
I'd like to make a motion that we have staff put together a comprehensive plan on street paving and on lighting for our entire city. And go back, and whichever of the areas are the darkest, those are going to be the ones that we attack first, because if each of us comes up and says, "This street is too dark, that street is too dark," we're not going to be able to, because the loudest people are going to be the ones that are coming in. What about the people that don't have a voice? What about the people who are not coming to the meetings? They still pay taxes too, they deserve to be represented in a financially fiscal, you know, a way that we're not wasting the money, and we need, well, it's not a waste, but we don't have it. So we need to go back, and my motion is to have the city put together a comprehensive plan for the needs, the worst needs first, on lighting and on street paving.
Ms. Vialos.
I agree, I completely agree with Mr. Duran. And just so you know, Mr. Duran, the people that have been coming to me are the worst, are the worst. I don't think I have anybody that, you know, has some lighting that comes to me and say, "We need more lighting." So, I completely agree, the people that are here today for their lighting, they had one light that has not worked in years, and there's two streets, two streets, and they just got their pavement, they had, their streets were not paved, and no light. So I agree, thank you.
Mr. Perez.
With regard, well, it's kind of hard to say that the streets that need, that are the darkest, if they're dark, they're dark, for one. Two, I think that we need to take it at face value when they come, when any constituent comes and asks for street lighting, because I don't see very many of us on company time or out at night looking for the streets. That, to me, is not rational.
Looking for lights.
Looking for lights or looking for the darkest streets.
Oh, right.
No, it's not going to happen. So I think that if you would, in terms of developing a comprehensive plan, making sure that we maybe take an average over the last five years of how much we spent on lighting, and then we, then dedicate the funding for that, so that if people come, whether it's on a first come, first served basis, whatever it is, where we make the determination, because ultimately also El Paso Electric is the one that decides if a fixture will be placed there or not, the feasibility of having a fixture there. So I think that we still need to have the constituents ask us for lighting, I mean, to approach us for lighting, because we won't know, we don't know what we don't know. So I think that if we just get back and have, go back five years, take an average of how much we spend, and then develop a budget for that particular item, for that particular piece of the plan.
Mr. Nevades.
There's definitely a sense of urgency here, so let's make a plan and work the plan. Enough of this complaining, let's have some positive feedback from the folks when they come in. So let's get ourselves organized here, and then work that plan, okay?
Mr. Duran.
With regards to what Ms. Vialos said, if there's a light and it is not working, we're paying for it. We need to report it to the electric company, they need to get out there and fix it, because we're paying for it. So if it's been out, we need to have, you know, everybody needs to help out. If you see a light that's not working, call the city, let us know, that way, because we're already paying for it. So we need to, that's another thing. But I think we also need to, you know, find out where the worst areas are, and we're going to do that by what you all are telling us. But we cannot just continue to, you know, there needs to be also be a procedure where somebody can ask for a street light, not just because it's dark, because most of Socorro is dark. So there needs to be a procedure, and staff can generate that procedure, that way the constituents can have their voice heard. You come to us, you tell us, "Hey, this one is not working, we'll get it fixed, because we're paying for it." Or, "It's super dark here," then there'll be a criteria for whether the light gets put in and within the budget.
Mr. Nevades.
This goes back to communication, folks. I would appreciate if someday we all come in here with some positive feedback. With that said, if there's need, and there is a lot of need in the city, but we're not mind readers here, so help us help you, okay? That's all.
Ms. Vialos.
I just want to let you know, if your lights are out, look at the post, there's a, there's a yellow...
Black.
...plaque on it, that's the number of your light. And you can report it to us, I normally send them to Mrs. Rolarte, and she reports those lights, and then she'll follow up whether they're fixed or not.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah, I agree, we...
Yeah, I agree. Um, we, we did a, uh, a, um, a budget, and we also, we did a five-year budget. We also budgeted money for it too, but I understand that, you know, as time passes, we have to go back and review. I guess that's what we need to do. Um, as far as the streets, we already have a process in place. We just have to revamp it again, once again, because what we did two years, two years ago i- is, is changed now. So, I mean, I understand that we have to go back and redo these things. At the same time, it should be easier because we already have a list already. We just have to go and make sure. So, that should, should be no problem. Um, as far as lights, I, I agree. I mean, we're, we're not out there, you know, every, we're not night owls, you know, um, and, and we don't know. So, we would appreciate that anybody would come up and let us know if there is a post, you know, there's a number there. Let us know. Um, and that also is an easy fix, you know, as long as we're, we're doing this. Um, and I do believe that we should put some funding aside on top of a budget for all of that so that when people do come up and addresses, "Hey, you forgot this street" or so-and-so, you know, we could look into it and, 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 uh, and try to also put it in. So, just have a separate budget, but just put some money aside for just the, the people that come in and, and ask us because we all get asked stuff like that. And, and, and like I said, I don't want it to be lopsided, um, because, you know, what if, what if Ms. Villalos asks for a million dollars and District Two only gets a hundred thousand left, or District Three gets only twenty thousand because, you know, what, it went... So, we just need a budget. That's all we need to do. So, it's a good, good idea.
Mr. Nevares?
Extra funding for a continuous improvement without the...
The overhead, yes.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-one, discussion and action to waive permit fees of the annual event First Thanksgiving fifteen ninety-eight on April twenty-second, twenty eighteen. Mr. Duran?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the permit fee for the annual event First Thanksgiving on April twenty-second, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say this, you know, and I'm gonna be the, the, the evil guy in this. You know, we should consider stop waiving fees. That's one thing I will say. It is only twenty-five dollars, and, and, and I need you to understand, twenty-five dollars here, twenty-five dollars there, twenty-five dollars there, twenty-five dollars there. I get it, but, you know, we're talking about, we haven't raised your taxes, people. You need to understand that. We're talking about trying to budget for lights and stuff like that, and it doesn't matter if it's twenty-five-dollar fee, really, you know? Um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in any way, shape, or form saying, I'm just saying it straight out, just eliminate it because all the money that we're giving away on fees, I mean, there's, there's, the churches make money. You mean to tell me that they can't put twenty-five dollars? You know, and stuff like that. I mean, it, and I get it. We, we just gave an amount, and then we're still gonna give the fee. I get it. It's redundant, but I mean, we, we need to really address it and say, "Hey, you know what? We need to start already tightening it up because it's getting a little bit thin here." That's all I'm saying.
Ms. Villalos?
I'm glad you brought it up. I have constituents always telling me every time I walk out of here, "Why are you waiving it? How much is the fee?" I thought the fee was fifteen. I guess it's twenty-five.
Even if it's thirty.
It depends on the event.
It just depends on the event.
So, it could be between...
I'm sorry, you caught me reading. Uh, special event fee is actually thirty-five dollars. Thirty-five dollars?
Thirty-five dollars. Okay. We really need to think about this because we, you, you are right. How many, um, how many things can, how many, do, do we have a study of how many, uh, how much we, we waive every year in fees in, 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 for these functions? Más o menos?
Funny you bring that up, ma'am. Um, I'm actually trying to compile a, a, a list of special events that we actually give in the city of Socorro uh, in the past. Um, basically, they've just been approved and then kind of thrown in a file, if you will, and no actual log has been kept. So, that's something I'm working on now, actually keeping logs of this, uh, of how many events, how many actually paid their fees, and who got them waived essentially. So far this year, uh, we've only had one that got waived.
And so, thirty-five dollars is to pay for...
The permit?
For, I know. What do we use the thirty-five dollars for? I mean, how much time does our employees, uh, how, how much time do our employees take ti- uh, uh...
To issue the permit?
Right.
Not more than thirty-five dollars. They get paid an hour. So, if the clerk is pay, getting paid fifteen dollars, I can't charge more than two hours, and the permit fee is just, you type it up and you print it out.
Okay.
So, probably will take like maybe at most fifteen minutes?
If that, um, sometimes we might have to work with them a little bit more since they need to do a traffic, uh, like a, like a parking analysis, if you will. Uh, we need to send it to PD sometimes as well. Um, it, it really depends on, on the actual event, ma'am, or how big of the event is.
So, it's, it's the fee plus the time from the clerk?
Okay, so for fees, we can't charge more than what it takes administratively. We have to be able to justify a fee. So, I can't charge a hundred and fifty dollars if I can't justify where we're spending those hundred and fifty dollars.
No, yes, I understand. Completely understand. Thank you.
Mr. Duran?
These are quality of life items. The First Thanksgiving, that's gonna bring people to Socorro. This bizarre annual event is gonna bring people to Socorro. Isn't that what we're trying to do? Granted, twenty-five dollars, like, or thirty-five dollars. It's more or less, you know, if we, I think we'll probably be saving money if we don't have our people issue a permit for the amount of money it's gonna take, because then they have to run it over to Mister Ochoa. He has to sign it. And these are all, like I said, these are quality of life items, bringing people to Socorro. Our own constituents to come and out, come out and have a good time. And I just, you know, I think it's, it, it just is nitpicking for the thirty, I mean, I, I agree. Maybe we should just, um, they should just have a procedure where they can have it waived automatically. Quit wasting our time here, too. Something, something the staff needs to look at. If they meet certain criteria, their permit fee is waived. We don't have to deal with it up here.
Mr. Benes?
Um, I don't agree with, um, charging the fees because in terms of cultural events, this, this helps promote that. And, um, we just, we have to have that relationship with community organizations that are nonprofit that don't have perhaps the means of, of, you know, paying that. I'm just thinking that it's just a, too much of a big cross-section. Whether it's a Girl Scout or Boy Scout troop wanting to do something with a big organi- or another, or a big organization, um, what ends up happening is that we start saying, "Well, if not for him, then for no one else." Or, "If for him, for everybody else." So, I think that, I don't think that we have felt the loss of twenty-five dollars or thirty-five dollars in the last, certainly not the, the first time, the two years that I was here, or the first four years. And now this, I, I, I don't, I, I think that we will survive, uh, not charging that amount. I think that also it allows people to be motivated to bring things over to Socorro, and we're able to develop that, that culture, restore the, not to restore, uh, reignite the pride of having, you know, a, a close-knit community that is rural, that is growing, and that has a lot to offer. And we need to be able to showcase that.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Jim, don't fall asleep on me, ma'am. Jim, since we're talking about permits... Yes, I, 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 I saw that, you know. Um, this is a question for you. Since we're in the, in the discussion of waiving the permit fee, then I wanna ask you, could the city just do an ordinance where, uh, churches and, and, um...
Nonprofit organizations?
Nonprofit organizations won't have to come as long as they prove that it's gonna be for public and waive a permit fee? Because...
Yeah, you, you could. You, you, if you recall, within the la- maybe a year ago or so, the city did revise its permit ordinance to permit the waiver of fees so, on certain conditions. It was, had to be an event open to the public, serve a public purpose, that kind of thing, and a not-for-profit had to be involved.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the way the ordinance reads now is that still has to come to council, but you could change the ordinance so that...
Okay, then that's, so then we'll just do something for the next council because that's one of the things that I, I don't like, is that we're picking and choosing. I just don't want it to be where a, a, a time comes where we're gonna deny somebody when we already, uh, uh, you know, approved before. I just don't wanna be in that predicament. So, that's what I was saying, is that if we do it, we just do it straight out. We just, just get it over with. And that's all I was saying. It's, it's not that I just nitpicking, you know, that I've said this since four years ago. I've been saying it once every year. I, I say it all the time. I just don't like, and I don't feel that we have to, you know, basically have, you know, the, the churches come and, and ask us, and then, you know, a nonprofit and stuff. It's just, if we're gonna do that, and constantly, we've been doing it, I guess we should just revamp our ordinance so that we won't have to come and be doing this all the time. That's my two cents.
Mr. Duran?
Just in what Mister Martinez said, that probably cost us more than thirty-five dollars for this permit. Just in the couple of minutes of his talking. So, I think we just need to waive this permit, get an ordinance, and quit wasting our time every time somebody wants to have an event. Thank you.
Ms. Villalos?
Can I ask, um, if we waive these permits, is it a, do we get a tax credit? Can we do something about maybe getting a tax credit at the end of the year when we file taxes, when the city files? Did the city file them? No. No, no, no.
City doesn't pay taxes.
No.
On anything?
On anything, unless, unless there was a, a separate business that was started by the, the city.
So, no. Okay. Just that maybe we could use it for that. Okay.
Mr. Benes?
Just one, one little thing I take exception to, Mister Duran. Uh, when you say, um, to waste our time, I think that I'd like to know what events are going on in the city. And, you know, for some people to, for an organization or its members to take the initiative to come to city council, I think that, uh, this is their, this is their venue as well, and so, and so I can't say that it's a waste of time. It's certainly not a waste of my time. Um, but I'd like to, and maybe in doing that, yes, streamline the process, but at the same time, I'd like to know who is applying.
Is receiving.
Who's receiving the waiver, and for what purpose, because that only helps us establish that report, uh, approve that report with the community. And, and again, I, I, you know, I, that's the one thing that I take exception to.
Mr. Duran?
Let me rephrase that, okay? It's not a waste of time. But if we streamline it to where the staff can take care of it, they can let us know. We don't have to put it on the agenda. If one of us has a, a problem with it, then we can put it on the agenda. But if it's, if it goes through staff, okay, then let's, let's just not use up our time. Night, waste was a poor choice of words. I stand corrected.
Ms. Retta?
In order for us to amend the ordinance, we have to bring the item back in order for us to, I have to post it, and then we can go back and amend.
Mayor, we have a speaker. Miriam Cruz? And twenty-one.
I was giving up, but I guess now I get to speak. Um, I get the idea of quality of life, nice events. I'm part of a church in this community. Uh, and my family, uh, is, is highly, highly involved in that church and is, uh, would probably hate me for saying that I, I think that no fee should ever be waived. And, and this is my reasoning. How many times do any of us come over here and ask for something, and you guys say, "We don't have the money. We don't have the budget"? Now, granted, twenty-five, thirty-five dollars might not make a big difference, but when you add it up, maybe that amount can actually be allocated for events that Mister Retta puts on, and that offsets that budget. Why? Because the events that he puts on are also community events. Um, I have nothing against your, anyone's event. No, no church, no, no anyone. But I'm pretty sure that a lot of organizations are used to having to pay a permit. You're gonna want food trucks. You have to pay a permit. You go to the Cere El Paso, you pay a permit. You pay a fee, and you, and you know you have to pay a fee. Now, we just, well, you all just finished giving these guys a lot of money. And, and I'm all for the arts.
Ms. Cruz, your time is up.
I'm all for the arts. I'm not against the arts either, but we need to consider growing our budget, and this is one way to, to start.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalos?
Yes.
Item number twenty, discussion and action to award Delmar Contracting, Inc. for excavating of the onion field in the amount of one billion two hundred sixty-five thousand seven hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents unauthorized city manager or her designate to sign contract or reject bid and go out for bid again.
Motion to approve the award?
Second.
Mayor and council, we published a bid for the excavation of the onion field on March eleventh and March eighteenth. We did open our bids on March twenty-third, and we only received one bidder. However, there was two other potential, uh, companies that wanted to bid, but they missed the deadline. Uh, with that being said, we reviewed, they met the scope of work, the, you know, the, the bid, which was Delmar Contracting, Inc. Um, and it came at the price that we had estimated. However, at the time that we estimated that price, we had a contractor that was looking into picking up the sand or the, the sand, clay.
The excavated material. So, they were gonna take a portion of it, and we were going to stockpile the rest.
That changed the unit price. It, it's off, uh, the unit price because now the contractor has gone somewhere else to get whatever sand they need just because of the time, timeframe. So, with that being said, it's up to council whether you wanna award the bid at one point two. However, there is gonna be a change order bec- uh, due to the unit price. But we do have other entities that are looking into the clay material and the sand, like the water irrigation district is looking for that. And we are going to try to publish and see if there's any contractors out there that would want to pick up the amount of sand.
Mr. Benes?
By, when do we need to make a decision on this?
Monster season is just around the corner. Um...
No, but no, I, no, no, one, the reason why I'm asking is that if we can hold off on, on making the, the award, make, uh, awarding the bid while you all solidify who is going to pick up the, the sand, you can come back with the next, next meeting and, and tell us, "Well, we, these people, whoever, whichever organization it is, will pick it up," and then we can go ahead and, and act on the...
And that is one option. The other option is to reject the bid and go out for bidding again at that point. We would make all the corrections with the correct unit prices. And, go ahead.
And then one more question.
Go ahead.
What is the, if, if you don't get anybody that wants to pick up the sand or the, the, the excavated material, what is the estimate, estimated cost of removing it? Is it a change order?
An amount. For, um, for removing it and disposal, it depends greatly on where the contractor's gonna take it. So, if they have to take it to a landfill, it's gonna be a little bit more expensive because it's farther away. If they have a project site nearby, which was, this was the case, um, they did give us a really good price for it. Uh, it's only five miles away. Um, so it, it really depends on where they end up taking it.
But the estimation amount?
About six dollars a cubic yard, I believe, is what they came back with.
And how many cubic yards do... And how many cubic yards do, is this project?
We have a hundred sixty-four thousand cubic yards, close to a hundred sixty-five thousand cubic yards of dirt.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez.
I, I, I think, uh, Mr. Perez, we should reconsider, uh, we should go out for, uh, uh, for qualifications again, and see, you know, what we can, like I said, I was reading in the backup where it's only one, and there was some more companies that were interested. This will give us enough time and an open window so that we can get all of the entities that want the sand as well, so that we can put it into, and then re, get, get, re-submittals, and it'll, we would come in at a, at a, I think at a reasonable, uh, uh, bid.
I agree, so Madam Mayor, if I may, I'll rescind my initial, my first motion, and make the motion to go ahead and, uh, uh,
Reject.
Reject this, this bid.
Reject, reject all bids.
Reject all bids, and go back up for, for, re-initiate the process.
And we will make sure that on this, uh, this time around, we will do an alternate, whether someone can pick up the sand or not, that way, there's nothing else holding us back.
Okay.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopes.
Yes.
Item number nineteen, discussion and action to approve nine streetlights on Lisa, Diane, Ernest, and Kipling, total cost of nine thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Before we, before we, yeah, commit these funds, I think that we should go back, let our staff go ahead and do a budget, then bring it back, and then do it, I, I think that, that'll be, but, like I said, it's just my opinion. Nine thousand dollars ain't gonna kill us, you know, um, this is something that, you know, if, if we choose to go and move ahead on this, you know, this is something that, you know, it's very minimal, um, but the, there's other stuff in the agenda that, that does come with a bigger price tag. So, I mean, if you guys wanna postpone it and then come back with a budget, or you just wanna approve them, and stuff like that, so.
Ms. Delavos.
Um, I think we can, uh, Mr. Adarte, you, you guys went out and you, uh, looked at the ci, at the two streets and decided nine lights is what they need?
Correct, uh, we asked the El Paso Electric to come out, and they did an assessment in the area, and that's the recommendation for, uh, these three streets and, uh, Vineyard.
And Vineyard.
Correct, but Vineyard is two thousand dollars more on a different item.
Okay, so, um, you do know that we, we had already approved uh, lights, but we didn't know the amount, correct?
There was no budget for it, and that's why I had to bring it back.
Okay, so, um, I mean, this is the last of the, the, what they need, the, this, this is the people that have been there for forty years and didn't have light, didn't have streets. I, I know that we just voted on something right now, but, um, I think we should allow this one to go through.
Mr. Perez.
Um, I think that we should just, uh, you know, expedite what's here, and then for next council meeting, whatever comes in between now and the next council meetings, then we start, uh, putting them on the list or, or prioritize them.
Mr. Nevares.
And I do agree with, uh, that one to go ahead and, and approve it, I will, though, on item number twenty-six, wait until we have a budget for that.
Okay, but we're not there yet, okay, 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 so I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
And we have speakers for this item, Irene Montero.
It's.
Señora Montero tiene un minuto y medio, eh? Nosotros vivimos ahí por más de treinta y cinco años, en la Edna, y no hay luces, allí topa un canal, pero más adelante sigue el canal. Y muchas, muchas personas no, no paran ahí, frenan, aún cuando no, no había el sign, muchas personas se fueron al canal, nunca pusieron un sign hasta que vio a Bregu. ¿Cuándo van a poner sign? Cuando hayan muertos, porque está muy oscuro, la gente llegaron y ya no sabían que había un canal. Y allí se llegaron a un caso, ayudó a personas a sacar los canales, por la razón que no querían hablar a la policía, por lo que fuera, pero porque no había ningún sign. Yo hablé, ¿cuándo van a poner un sign? No me hacían caso, hasta que yo les dije, ¿cuándo van a poner? Cuando hayan muertos, hayan niños muertos, porque está muy oscuro. Vivimos personas por más de cuarenta años ahí, yo tengo treinta y cinco años viviendo en esa calle. Así es que sí, es justo que hay un presupuesto para que nos pongan los buses, gracias. Antonio Terán.
Buenas tardes, este, lo mismo, eh, este, yo también tengo treinta y cinco años allí. Nosotros, pues no hemos podido alumbrar la calle porque está tremendo, aparte de que hay poca vigilancia también. Hace quince días mi hija le habló a la policía, porque andaban agarrados allí en la calle, inclusive no es gente de allí. Y, y, y no estamos pidiendo, no creo que no haya presupuesto para poner nueve luces, cuando a nosotros no nos preguntan si, si podemos pagar los taxis o no. Nosotros los tenemos que pagar a fuerzas, porque si no, la ciudad nos quita. Y ustedes qué, muy cómodos, ustedes ganan su dinero, yo no trabajo, y sin embargo tengo que pagar. Es un servicio que necesitamos, que estén trabajando nuestros taxis, no nos están regalando nada. Ni usted, ni usted, ni usted, ni usted, ni usted, es nuestro impuestos. No creo que tengamos que venirnos arrodillarnos aquí, gracias.
Rubén Montero.
Es por el mismo caso, esperemos que ahora sí nos hagan, pues sí, que se oiga lo que estamos hablando, gracias.
Those were all our speakers. Rene Rodriguez.
Um, Mr. Duran had, no, no, you, you had a.
Mr. Oden.
Okay, this is just what I was talking about earlier.
Mr. 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 Duran, could you, uh, they don't speak English, so you could translate some of it in Spanish, maybe this is why they didn't understand.
My Spanish is not that great, and I don't wanna offend, I don't wanna offend anybody. This is just exactly what we were talking about earlier, the whole city, everybody in this town pays taxes. Nobody pays more taxes than anybody else, unless you, you know, it goes by your property value. But there isn't one person here that pays more taxes per, for your property. A lot of people don't have lights, a lot of people don't have streets, I've already, we've already gone through it one time. You coming up here and telling us you pay taxes, so you deserve the lights, we need to find out who has the most, more need, not the ones who come up here and demand. Everybody has the right to have a well-lit street, everybody does, the entire city. Some have gone without it for longer, everybody deserves a well-paved street. Some streets aren't even paved, they, they're dirt. And then we, you know, you come up here and you accuse us of not caring. We do care, every, every one of us cares about, but we also, you elected us to take care of your money, to spend it wisely, and I, I think, you know, you're complaining about thirty-five dollars, but yet, you know, we need to, I think we need to hold off on this. If it is well-needed, if it, if it does fall under the criteria, by all means, let's do it. But we don't know, we don't know if there's areas that are more needy, and I think we're jumping the gun, and I think we need to, to, okay, the, the electric company went out there and looked at it, yeah, they need nine lights. Did they go through every street in Socorro and find out who else needs nine lights? I don't think so. Exactly, we do need to be realistic, we, I think we need to go back, be fair to every citizen in Socorro, not just the ones that are here tonight. Be fair to every citizen in the city, and put the lights where they're most needed. Put the streets where they're most needed, do all of that before we jump into it, and let's, I, I think we just need to postpone this just until we get an assessment of if the need is greatest there, or anywhere else. Not saying that you're not gonna get your lights, I'm just saying that we need to see the need first.
Ms. Delavos.
You know, I'm glad you're bringing up, you know, that we need, we need to put the, the, the lights where they need it. If anyone needs the lights, it's this area, they have been complaining to all their, to other mayors, they, they, everybody came out, the, all the neighbors came out, and they came and told me, who's going to help us, we've been to every mayor, they talked about every mayor, and, uh, you know, that they said they were put, they would put, these people have been living there for thirty-five years, forty years, no paved streets, zero, no lights, and all they're asking is for something basic, for the last twenty, thirty-five years, they've been fighting this. And they're in need, they're in great need, he just told you, there's a canal that, uh, I'm not sure when, but, I, I'm not su, I, I have no idea when, but, uh, the city put out a, uh, barrier because of the accidents, because you, it was so dark, you could not see the canal in front of you. And of course, there's no road, it's all dirt, so if anybody needs these lights and these streets, they're one of them. They're, they're exactly what you're talking about, they model that situation. So I ask everyone here to please, um, allow them to have their lights, that's, they, they came and told you, they, they came and thanked you for their, their streets, now, all they need is their light, that's all they need in that area, they're not asking for too much. Thank you.
Mr. Nevares.
I agree, uh, as well as with Mr. Perez, let's take care of this one now, and then come back with a budget for any additional award we need in the city, let's not hold off on things that are needed, it's a safety hazard, and it's gonna cost a lot more if we end up with accidents here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
You know, uh, this item is, is, ahorita estábamos, y vamos a tratar de, ahorita, se los voy a decir en español para que entiendan, porque hay muchos que no entienden el inglés, pero ahorita vamos a tomar una voto para ver si se pasa, para que ustedes agarren sus luces, o no. Um, I will say this to council, we spent ten thousand dollars on a name change. Okay, and I say we, which I didn't take that vote, 'cause I wasn't here. But, uh, but, but it's we, because I am part of this body. And I will say this, if we're gonna stop with putting a name and costing ten thousand dollars, I see no need and no reason why we can't give them nine thousand dollars for their lights, which is a health, I mean, not a health, but a, a, a safety concern, you know? I have children that, that, that I don't let play outside of my house, because there's no adequate lighting. I put a big light so that my children can play in, in my front of the house, so I understand their concerns. One more time, people, it's ten thousand dollars, less than what it costs us to name, uh, a street. Find it in your hearts, people, please.
Mr. Nevares.
I say, let's have, going forward, folks, a lean approach to what's really needed in the city, and get away from wasting money where it's not applicable, lean approach. Look at it, see what's needed, what's not, and let's, let's get it done.
Mr. Oden.
I do agree, you know, listening, accidents happen, they do, but let's go ahead and like, I, I do agree with Mr. Perez, let's, let's get this one done, get it done, get it over with, but from now on, let's assess the need first before you bring it to council. Don't bring in, 'cause I mean, um, you bring in a lot of people, all asking for the same thing. Their needs are not greater than anybody else's, because they're here, let's go ahead and do this one, because, yeah, there is, there is a need. But let's go ahead and assess it first before it comes to council, that way, staff knows that it's genuine problem, not just because the constituents, because a lot of people come and tell you. We need to, we need to address for every citizen, not just the vocal ones.
Ms. Delavos.
I have a problem, if a constituent, constituent comes to me, Mr. Duran, and asks me for something, I'm not going to put the brakes on it. My, my job is to, I usually go to, uh, Mr. Adarte, and I ask her, and if not, she'll tell me to put it on the, on, on the item, the, the item on the agenda. Um, or she usually says it's on, you know, it's, it's already in progress, something like that. But I can't tell a constituent, no, I can't put that on there, because, you know, uh, we're on a budget, you know, and, you know, I could certainly bring it here, we can discuss it, and, and, and let it be what it is, so, you know, I don't agree with, I really don't agree with, with, uh, you know, trying, for, it's not our job, I don't think it's our job to try to figure out who gets what and who win. Yeah, yeah, so, as an individual, I'm sorry, as an individual.
Okay, cool, let's call a question.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Lopes.
Yes.
Item number eight, public hearing of an ordinance amending section forty-six dash two sixty, section two, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Socorro, Texas, to clarify multifamily dwelling uses and densities in the R-two, medium-density residential zoning district. Seven-ten, public hearing is now open.
I just wanna, uh, commend Mr. Ochoa for bringing this to council, uh, I know that the planning and, and zoning ordinances are a lot, uh, to tackle, uh, and I'm glad we're not waiting for, for too many of them at a time, and I'm glad that he's bringing them forward, and I, and I hope that council continues to invite and accept all ordinance changes and clarifications that staff brings forward, so that we can continue to put our ordinances in order, thank you.
Seven-eleven, public hearing is now closed, item number nine, second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending section forty-six dash two sixty, section two, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Socorro, Texas, to clarify multifamily dwelling uses and densities in the R-two, medium-density residential zoning district.
Motion to, uh, approve the second reading and adoption of said ordinance.
Second.
Discussion or call the question?
Call the question, please.
We have a speaker for this item. David Estrada.
I signed up for these because I wasn't, I'm not particularly clear as to what these are, and that's my fault, but, um, I'm, I'm seeing a motion, and then getting ready, you know, you guys are getting ready to vote, it looks like. So, I would just wanted to ask you, see if you could clarify what you guys are voting on, I know I have those questions, and then maybe some people behind me have those questions also. Um, so for example, to clarify multifamily dwelling uses, um, I know the subdivision on the other side of Rancho Mira Val, I think they, they're wanting to maybe do some duplex lots in there. So, defining multifamily dwelling, the uses, well, what is that, what are, what are you guys voting to amend?
What happens, sir, is that you have, I'm sorry, you have different designations for the types of residential dwellings that you've got. So you've got R-one, R-two, and R-three, R-one is your more spacious land, uh, fit building, that's, that's, uh, your higher-end homes. You've got the R-two, which is a medium density, which is, um, not necessarily your starter homes, a little, a little bit higher than starter homes, and then you've got the R-three, which are the really compact, really condensed, uh, areas, where you have more of your starter homes, but you have a lot more of them. It is just a, a way of, of developers getting the most for their money, and, and putting as many homes as they can in an area. So what we're trying to do is avoid the R-three, because that creates a problem for our infrastructure, in terms of roads, and, 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 and just basically the safety issue, because as, again, again, we have very narrow roads and so. in terms of roads, and, 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 and just basically, uh, the safety issue, because as again, again, we have very narrow roads in Socorro. And so the only time when we have, uh, a road expansion is when the developer builds their, the homes, and then their part is expanded, but everything else is still narrow. And so what we're trying to do is, uh, focus on the R-twos, and then also limit the amount of dwellings within a property. Because, um, that also was at, at a point where you could have, for example, an apartment, uh, you know, behind your house, or whatever the case would be. So that's what we're trying to streamline, and that's basically it. I mean, we're, what we're trying to is, not, is control the development, that's what it is, and without having to pay, without having to burn the city on its infrastructure.
And so you're voting on amending previous ordinances to, to get to a better zoning?
To improve the zoning, yes, sir, yes, sir, but we have to, we have to take into account what's already there, and then amend it.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's what we're doing.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And another thing, every time we have public hearing, anybody can come up, can come up and talk, we don't, you don't have to sign up for those items.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Navas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos?
Yes.
Item number ten, introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing of an ordinance amending the City of Socorro master plan and the proposed rezoning of tracks two E and two E-two, block eleven, Socorro Grant, from A-one agricultural to R-one, single-family residential, R-two medium-density residential, and C-two general commercial.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, this is essentially an introduction or first reading, uh, for a proposed rezoning of this, uh, property shown here, uh, in the, in the map. Currently is, uh, Zone A-one agricultural. Olivia, Ms. Olivia? There you go, highlighted in the yellow there. Um, currently the property is vacant, or undeveloped, agricultural land, Zone A-one, um, agricultural. Uh, the applicant is seeking, uh, to, to rezone the property to R-two, um, and, well, actually, was originally proposing to do R-two and C-two, for the purpose of developing a new subdivision on the property, where essentially he would have commercial zoning along the front and along North Loop, as something that we're looking to do, and then R-two, e- everything R-two in the back. Essentially, would be, uh, two commercial lots and a hundred and sixty-three single-family residential lots in that subdivision. It went to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on March twentieth of this year. During that meeting, uh, the, the applicant agreed with a, well, there was much discussion at that meeting, actually, between the applicant, Planning and Zoning Commission, and, uh, adjacent residents as well, concerned, and so on, and so forth like that. The applicant was amenable to some of the, uh, the, the concerns and, uh, requests of the adjacent residents, uh, as well as they did, uh, uh, agree to essentially, uh, change where it would be, instead of it just being C-two in the front and all R-two in the back, it'll now be C-two in the front, R-two in the middle here, and everything south of this lateral here will be R-one. Uh, same zoning as the, the subdivision to, to the east, excuse me. So that is what they're, they're proposing now. The Planning and Zoning Commission did go ahead and recommend approval for this, with that condition, that, uh, uh, all the subject properties south of these lateral be on R-one, instead of the originally proposed R-two. And Planning and Zoning Department did recommend approval for the proposed rezoning as well.
Mayor, can I ask Adam a question?
Yes, of course.
Adam, do I read the ordinance right? That, that change is not in the proposed ordinance, the way it's drafted now, right?
Uh, the "we" the ordinance is drafted now? Yes, it is, it says, states R-one, R-two, and C-two.
Does it, but does it identify the part that's R-one, south of the lateral?
Uh, no, sir, it's, it's just general, yeah, we could clarify that in, in a statement.
Mayor, my recommendation is, the, the, if council is inclined to approve this, the, I would suggest the motion be, to spe- the motion specify that the area south of?
The lateral.
Which lateral is it, do we know?
It's lateral.
The sl- the sl- the sl- the lateral is, is R-one, not R-two. And if we have the applicant here, it would be helpful to have the applicant confirm that he's, that they've agreed to that.
The, the applicant did confirm that, that, that would be totally fine with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay. Right, at, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, he approved, he, he did, uh, agree to that condition, everything south of the lateral, that was the condition.
Those are in the minute, I'm sure that's in the minutes.
Yes.
May I, may I go ahead and make a motion to approve the introduction, first reading, and calling for a hearing on, um, the propo- oh, excuse me, the proposed rezoning of lot four, block one of Wallace Estates? And I might be reading the wrong one, no, am I reading the right one?
That's a different one, sir.
It is?
Number ten.
Number ten.
Oh, it's the same one. So then, I apologize, introduction, first reading, and calling for a hearing on, uh, the proposed rezoning of tracks two E, two E-two, block eleven, Socorro Grant, from A-one agricultural to R-one, south, was it south of the sl-?
The sl- the lateral, yes.
The sl- the lateral, R-two, and C-two.
Make a, uh, second?
No, it's introduction. This is an introduction, and there's no speakers allowed on introductions until the public hearing at the next, next meeting. Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Navas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos is absent.
Item number eleven, introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing of an ordinance amending the City of Socorro master plan and the proposed rezoning of Lot Four, Block One, Wallace Estates Replant A, ten-seven-ninety Socorro Road, from A-one agricultural to S-U-one special use zone.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, this next introduction is a proposed rezoning of the property located at one-zero-seven-nine-zero Socorro Road. Uh, currently, the property is Zone A-one agricultural, and is currently vacant or undeveloped. Uh, the applicant is essentially seeking a zone change for this property to S-U-one, which is a special use zone, uh, for the purpose of developing a new wireless communication facility on the property, with, uh, within that facility being an eighty-foot tall, uh, wireless communication tower, which will be camouflaged as a pine tree. The actual, um, this project, I guess, has already been, has gone through, uh, every requirement. They had to subdivide the property, they had to go to the Historic, Historic Landmark Commission, who actually approved the design, uh, of that pine tree, as well as put a condition that a, 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 I believe it's a cinder block wall, stuccoed and painted, um, New Mexican chili, I believe is the color, be, be put around the property. Um, so essentially, this is their final step to get the zone change, before they could come in, uh, and they essentially get their permit for the proposed wireless communication facility on the property. Planning and Zoning Commission did, uh, review this, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval for the proposed rezoning, and the Planning and Zoning Department, Department did recommend approval as well.
May I, if I may, make a motion to, uh, approve the introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing of the ordinance amending the City of Socorro master plan and the proposed rezoning of Lot Four, Block One, Wallace Estates replant, on ten-seven-nine-zero Socorro Road, from A-one to S-U-one.
Second.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Navas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos is absent.
Item number twelve, discussion and action to approve the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget calendar.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mayor? Mr. Arta?
I just wanted to make a recommendation for the workshops. If, normally, when we do them at four o'clock, nobody really shows up. So I don't know, we can change them to different days, or to six o'clock before our meeting. But we have, the last two years that I've been here, we only have like one council member show up for those workshops.
Well, for me, it's hard to get here.
Saturday?
Saturdays are fine, and we can do for Saturdays, that's fine.
Never mind, never.
No, no, so, so everybody, so everybody can show up. So, uh, Saturday, we'll just do two hours, max.
Knock it out.
Knock it out, and then if, you know, we'll, we'll do that. Okay, I'll resend my motion. And then we'll, we'll move and recommend the days for Saturday. Jim, that just didn't look good.
Oh, Saturdays are fine.
Okay.
Mayor, do you have one, one, uh, proposed change? The, the law says the budget has to be filed thirty days before the tax, at least thirty days before the tax levy hearing. The tax levy hearing is scheduled for the tax levy meeting. Meeting at which we actually had, introduced the tax levy ordinance, is September thirteen. So September, so number two, August fifteen, is one day short, it's, it's not thirty days, it's twenty-nine days. So my proposed amendment is to change number two to be to August fourteen, if you can.
When I take it, that's not a Saturday? So what days you guys? You wanna do six? You guys wanna do weekends, or you guys wanna do?
I'm sorry, I, I.
Do you guys, wanna leave it at four, on a weekday?
Can we do Saturday morning?
Or we could do Saturday morning?
I'd rather, I'd rather do Saturday morning.
Early Saturday morning.
No, like at nine?
Like at six-thirty?
Nine?
No.
Eight?
Eight.
Eight is fine, eight, eh, eh, eight to, to ten?
That's fine.
Okay, we'll do that.
So Saturday?
We can do Saturdays. Eight.
So we'll just do the Saturdays after, like, May seventeenth, we can do it, um, May nineteenth?
Ten, yes.
Sorry? Yes, please.
No.
So May nineteenth at eight AM?
And it usually takes a couple of hours, or two hours?
We'll, we'll, we'll do two, 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 two.
And then for June seventh, we'll do June ninth, which is on a Saturday? Eight AM?
Yes.
And then July fifth, we'll do July seventh?
When? Wait, 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 wait.
Wait, 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 on that one?
For July, you have July fifth, so that would be that Saturday, July.
That's my birthday.
That's not, that's not workable.
That's a vacation week, I think.
Okay. Hold on, remember the clues I didn't take last year? On July seventh? I'm taking it this year, on July seventh.
So do you wanna do it the weekend before?
Yes, please.
Would you be July the, I'm sorry, June thirtieth?
Yes, that, that'll work.
Eight AM? And then for July the nineteenth, we can either do July twenty-first or July fourteen?
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Fourteen?
The sooner we get it done, the better.
Yeah.
So July fourteen, eight AM.
Okay, so moved, with that schedule.
If it has to change, we can bring it back and change a day or two, if we have to, or this is set in stone?
When, that's just what you're approving now, you can always.
Second. Just, can, Mayor, may I, just read the, the dates again one more time?
Can you just read the?
Go over the dates one more time.
I'm sorry?
Can you go over the dates one more time?
It would be Saturday, May nineteenth, eight AM, June ninth, June thirtieth, and July fourteen.
All at night, right?
I just wanna apologize to our staff, that, I'm sorry. Call for the question?
Did we say eight or nine?
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Navas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lobos?
Yes.
I did tell.
Can we do eight-thirty? No.
Item number thirteen, discussion and action to enter into a contract with Monster Commercial Contractors for stabilization work needing to be done at the Rio Vista Community Center, and resonate city manag- designate city manager or her designee to execute the contract.
Motion to approve, second.
Mayor and council, uh, just a little update, we are ready to proceed with the adobe stabilization work, meaning this is the actual adobe bricks that'll go inside the actual community center. Uh, this is not additional funding we're requesting, we're actually already within our budget for the COs, and with the help of our grant administrator, we actually have pri- applied for a grant that could potentially cover the cost of this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Perez?
We couldn't, um, unless the help of, just, I, I'm just asking, of kids need to do, uh, community service hours through Socorro High School?
We've been using not only Socorro High School, but also the County Juvenile Promotion Program to help us with painting, as well as cleanup. Not so much actual construction, just because liability, but things that they are, are able to do, they have been helping us on the weekends.
I mean, like forming the, the adobes, and so, or are we gonna get them?
Um, those we already get from the contractors.
Oh, they're already done, okay, okay. Because I thought it was maybe similar to the, the mission project, where people were actually making the adobes, so.
Because they make them offsite, that's the only reason why they couldn't.
All right.
The contractor does that, though.
Not a problem, thank you.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Navas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos?
Yes.
Item number fifteen, discussion and action on the final plat approval for Vista Bonita Estates subdivision, unit one, being a portion of track five, block twenty-four, San Elisario.
Mayor and council, uh, before you, you make a motion, remember that this item was approved last, uh, meeting. However, we stated we're gonna, it was reoccurring until we had an agreement with a developer, and we're just giving you a status on that agreement.
Oh.
And there's an email attached with, um, an update.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you can see, uh, staff did contact the engineer, uh, representing, uh, the proposed subdivision, or the final platform Vista Bonita, uh, they are finalizing that agreement. Uh, they just need, I believe, the, the property owner to sign off on it. As soon as they get it, though, they will sh- uh, send it over to us. We'll, uh, review it as staff, make sure, uh, everything's taken care of, and then from there, we'll, uh, bring it here and, uh, provide it to adjacent residents as well, just to make sure that everybody's concerns are taken care of.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we really don't need a motion, it's just gonna continue coming up every meeting, so we don't, you know, it's, everybody knows exactly where we're at. We do have several speakers for this case.
David Estrada?
So we could just postpone it to the following meeting?
No action.
No, oh, no action is needed, okay, my bad.
Mr. Estrada?
My name's David Estrada. Um, this was the item that I wanted to, to discuss after item number thirty-five. Uh, I realize that we, that this was voted on last session, and that it was approved, and it, this is for unit one, and I understand that, but it just seems that this, this process in favor of the developer contin- continues to move forward nice and smooth, from our point of view. And item number thirty-five, and we can discuss that one, and I'll be, you know, discussing that one at that time, but it, it just seems that, for the developer, it seems to go nice and smooth, and he moves forward. The last time he was here, Mr. Conde came up here, and as soon as he pushed, he pushed back, all of you agreed and, and, and passed it. All of you agreed, you said aye, and then just passed it just by him coming, he's not here today. But that last time, he was sitting right over there, he came over here and pushed, pushed back to you guys, and you guys passed it. And yet, here we are, the citizens of Rancho Miraval, we, we're here yet again, and we still don't have any closure on vacating those streets. I wanna remind everybody that it was an agreement, that you guys got that easement, right? You guys got that easement, in, in return, we were gonna vacate those streets. And now here we are with a memo where, we're kinda getting bulldozed with this memo on the items that you're wanting us to do in order to vacate the, the streets. He continues with his project, that's great for him, and then where, where do we stand? So, that, that's just what I wanna say, thank you. Um, well, one more thing, there is a gentleman back there who came here late, so I wanna, he's asking me to please ask you to make a motion, or whatever you need to do, to have him speak, so.
Jesús Cabrera?
Can I do it now? Okay, this is Jesús Cabrera, living in Rancho Miraval. And the same reason for item number fifteen, concerning that this developer, yeah. Okay, this is Jesús Cabrera, living in Rancho Miraval, and the same reason for item number fifteen, concerning that, uh, this developer, yeah, everybody passed, blah, 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 and he commented a letter, and it says it would be the next time in two weeks. I don't see the letter, can the, the lawyer has it? I don't know what kind of lawyer he has, but I think they should have already the agreement. Now, concerning i, item number thirty-five, then we wanna discuss it again, it's concerning also the, that they wanna discloser the streets and not respect the other ones, that they wanna put a wall, blah, 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 the easement and all that, so what page are we actually are? Sometimes, you know, it's already two years, come on, man, it's two years. And every single day, since this problem start, it's a matter of fight last night, I almost hit myself on the wall, saying, why are both of these people? You guys supposed to help us. The other day, I got a relat, relative coming from Mexico, all the way from Mexico City, and he likes the area, hey, you live in a nice, a nice area. Yeah, it's gonna be destroyed real soon, but you know what, as soon as I got, uh, what's the street, Socorro, yeah, I thought it was in Juarez. He turned me down. Now, you heard it, I, I was hearing a lot.
Mr. Cabrera, your time is up. Thank you. Ferny Salcido?
Yeah, agreeing with Mr. Estrada, we, we had a gentleman's agreement and I felt like you guys were pressured to go ahead and let him do phase one of this development for Vista Bonita. The agreement was that he was supposed to provide all the info in writing within the two-week timeframe. He, in the early stages, is already not meeting to that commitment. What is to come? Down the pike? Those are some of my concerns, I'm just trying to protect the city of Socorro, because what we're dealing with is the county. And we're gonna be dealing with the high traffic, we don't have the infrastructure in place, we're gonna be dealing with all the associated problems that come in with the development of this size. And here we are, week three, and we still don't have anything. We agreed on it, all of us did. And if he's not abiding by it in this early stages, what is to come? Thank you.
Mayor, those are all our speakers. Mr. Rodriguez?
You, you know, it's, it's not been two years, it's been more than two years, it's been two years and like, almost three. You know, I understand, uh, these are headaches that we, we do our due diligence, people don't understand that we're local, okay? So we rule over you, but people tend to forget that the state rules over us, okay? And on top of that, federal rules over state and local. So not only do we have to abide by our own rules, we have to abide by the state's rules and we have to abide by federal rules. So we get dinged twice, we have to follow not only one, our rules, but two other rules, and those two other rules trump our rules. We've been fighting, we've been trying to ask the developer, and I get it, okay? I get it, we're, we're, we're in a point where this is already the last step. We approved it last week, this is just an update, I guess, and, 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 uh, we, we are going to continue to fight till the last drop, you know? Don't, don't think that just because he's not here today, believe me, he's gonna be here today, he's gonna be here someday. We're still fighting, but I want you to, guys, to have confidence in us, and I want you to understand that. Anybody that comes to that podium, anybody that comes to that podium, I myself is not a pushover, I don't care, neither are my colleagues. We're not pushovers, but I will tell you this, if the state says that we have to abide and do something by a certain date, we are going to do it. Because I'm not here to break a law, and I'm pretty sure my colleagues aren't gonna here to break a law as well. But we continue to fight and we're gonna fight for you, I just want you to just be a little bit more patient. We already been here for two and a half years, what is an additional, a couple of days? It's frustrating, I get in your shoes, because I get in your shoes and I feel what you guys are feeling, I really do. But have confidence in us, this is not over, this is not over, okay? I just want you to have a little bit more patience, unfortunately, and, and I, and I will say it with my colleagues, unfortunately, we have to abide by some rules. But we are continuing to fight, we already asked and we're gonna proceed with it, nothing's gonna be done until he brings us that, 'cause that's what we said last time. So don't worry about it, just give us a little bit more time, it'll get done.
At this time, Madam Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and suspend the rules, uh, there was a gentleman, he, he's a gentleman that came in late.
Second.
And if, uh, the conditions, the three-minute, uh, suspension of the rules.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Mr. Attorney, Mr. Martinez? Since I am a resident of that subdivision, um, and I've heard many different stories of how I can vote or not vote, it, in order for me to comply at this time, what is your suggestion I should do?
Certainly, simply abstain if you choose to do so, but it's, I know it's posted as an action item, but I think the reality is it's just an update.
Yep, yep.
And, and to the, uh, and to allowing this gentleman to speak? Are we good?
Yes.
Yes.
I think I have, my name is Roberto Duran, and I live in eleven-nine-four-two Rancho Miraval, long before Socorro was even a town. And, you know, I don't oppose development, and, you know, I don't take people's word either. The only thing I take is writing, and you've been writing everything here, that that puts everybody else on the awkward side because nothing has come up on writing. The thing is, that supposedly in article thirty-five, you're talking about an HOA, you don't control HOAs, the state of Texas approves that. If we get legal counseling and we fill the forms for an HOA, I don't think Socorro can stop it, because you haven't even talked to the state if that for Vista Bonita states has even applied to connect to Socorro, that is a state function, and it's gonna cost them a pretty sized penny. If they think that they're gonna use Rancho Viejo as their, their right-of-way to North Loop, we'll have to go and take, go HOA and get legal counseling, because that's completely out of the control of Socorro. HOAs are all controlled by the state of Texas, they dictate the rules, and if we get legal counseling, you're saying here that you will decide who's gonna do the appraising, who's gonna do the surveying? If we get legal counseling, he is the one that's gonna determine how we're gonna proceed this thing. I think that before you guys approve the master plan for this development, without knowing how they're gonna connect to the main arteries in the state of Texas, you should have already asked that developer, where are the permits? Because if he doesn't have the permits and he thinks he's gonna start making a development without having legal access to the state of Texas, he's gonna have a fight in his hand too, and if we take it to the, the state, that you're trying to use a, a legal exit to Texas, which the residents of Rancho Miraval estate purchased long before Socorro was a city, and which probably was grandfathered in. But we still have rights, because we owned that property before Socorro became a, a, a city. So I think that before we start approving this development plan for Vista Bonita state, we need to go back to block one and say, okay, where are the permits for you to get connected to the state arteries? And if they don't have it, they're not gonna be able to go through the back of Rancho Viejo to get access. They're talking about that the back portion, which the map was up there, is gonna be used as an R-one, which is a single dwelling.
Mr. Duran, your time is up.
Have you asked the water boundary, that you can put a bridge over that levee? You haven't, because they're not gonna approve it.
Sir, your time is up, I'm sorry.
I'm almost finished, and I probably won't be the last speaker here, but I want you to know that if we do take legal counseling, then we're gonna have to go legal counseling, because you guys are putting resistance to it. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Item number sixteen, discussion on action to approve a resolution authorizing the city of Socorro to submit a grant application to the Office of the Governor Homeland Security Grants Division, two thousand nineteen, Local Border Security Program, requesting fifty-two thousand three hundred and twenty with sixty cents in funding for overtime patrol hours and overtime dispatcher hours, no cash match required.
Motion to approve the submission? Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, my name is Alejandra Valades, interim grants coordinator. Um, on behalf of the Police Department, we're requesting your approval to submit this grant application. This is for the twenty nineteen Local Border Security Program in the amount of fifty-two thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents for overtime patrol hours. Uh, we have participated in the Local Border Security Program in the past, this funds the, uh, Operation Border Star, which is, uh, intended to deter criminal activity at the border. Um, there is no catch, cash match requirement for this grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number seventeen, discussion on action to approve a resolution authorizing the city of Socorro to seme, submit a grant application to the Bloomberg Philanthropies two thousand eighteen Public Art Challenge requesting four hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-three in funding for a public arts initiative to spur economic and cultural development in the city of Socorro. Matching funds of five hundred thousand will be included as per resolution five oh three.
Motion to approve submission?
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Katia Moraza, she is a Socorro High School student who has been interning in the Grants and Special Programs, um, office, and she's been doing a lot of work on this grant.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor and Council, we request your approval to submit an application to Bloomberg Philanthropies two thousand eighteen Public Art Challenge for a pu, for a public arts initiative here in Socorro, Texas, with the goal of rebranding our series image and promoting economic and cultural development in Socorro. The Recreation Center Department will request four thousand fifty-six hundred three hundred and sixty-three dollars in funding to renovate and equip the, the Rio Vista Historic District. Funding will be used for an art gallery and exhibition space, an artist workshop space for local artists, and local artists residency program. Local artists participating in the residency program will pro, will produce public artworks at Rio Vista for exhibition at different public spaces throughout the city. The public art pieces will be intended to motivate discussions around civic issues to draw the public out into city and to revitalize our public spaces. The city will use the five hundred thousand in improvements to Rio Vista that wa, that were already allocated through the Capital Improvements Plan. No further much is needed. If approved, we would like to, we would like to make a call to all local artists to visit the city of Socorro website for information on how to submit pub, a public arts project for consideration through this grant. Any local visual artists, musicians, performing arts, or digital, digital artists are eligible to apply, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
This is the five thou, five hundred thousand dollars that we allocated, right, for the Rio Vista Community Center?
Correct.
Okay, so, w, all we're doing is just moving the funds, right?
Uh, no, the five hundred thousand dollars is for renovations at the Rio Vista Center. Uh, two of those buildings will be used as an art gallery and an artist workshop space, so we can use those funds as matching for this grant. Um, yep.
So we're not touching the six hundred thousand for the library, correct? Or is it's coming from that?
Well, it's part of the, it's part of your Rio Vista.
Okay, so then it is. Okay, that's all I wanted to know, okay.
Rene Rodriguez?
I just have a quick question before I ask my vote, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So what's gonna happen to the library?
The library's still gonna exist, we're just gonna use two of the buildings from the renovations of the rehabilitation of the whole entire.
Oh, okay, okay. I, okay.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to hear. Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Mr. Villalobos? Mayor, at this time, I'd like to ask if we could move up item number twenty-five, flip-flop it with, um, eighteen, and move eighteen to twenty-five. Our, our speakers here in.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-five, discussion on action to approve street lining on Vineyard in the amount of two thousand and ten.
Motion to approve?
Second.
They'll call. Do we have a video? Uh, Esteban, the video, the video? Yeah, yeah, she's right there.
Okay.
Uh, this video was sent, uh, by a constituent, his wife is here in his place, and, um, he wanted you to preview it. I guess what he's trying to say here is, um, there's not a lot of, this is Vineyard and there's not a lot of, there's no poles, no electric pole, electrical poles. And then he's gonna show you later, I think there's a video where it's dark, right? I think it's, uh, pictures, oh, pictures, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I think he's showing you that there's some areas nearby that have so many lights. Yeah, exact, I'm sorry. I, you can't hear the video very well.
He was counting off the lights.
I'm sorry?
He was counting off the lights as they went through, he was like one light, two light.
Is across the street?
So, what he's trying to say here is that there's, there's a, a street, correct? There's a street before your street that has a whole bunch of lights? Okay, and then your Vineyard has, okay.
Mayor, we have a speaker? Rebecca, no, Ramirez? No, Ms. Ramirez is gonna speak.
Mayor, Council, um, I just wanna give you some, just provide some, the argument or the justification for the street lighting on Vineyard Road, because it's a high-traffic area, we also have the police training center, uh, the facility's there, it's completely pitch dark, it, we feel unsafe. Many of the neighbors are in agreement to, um, having the lights put up. Um, we have a lot of speeders through that area, we have police always const, you know, they're constantly stopping people that are going fifty or, you know, miles per hour and, uh, it's like a twenty to thirty mile-per-hour road. Um, it also, we also have the, the irrigation di, uh, the, the roads, right, that people drive on and they drive onto Vineyard Road from those and, and posing a, a dangerous, um, traffic hazard. Also, this road is utilized, utilized by many to go to the, uh, it, the Indian Reservation. So it's, it's just a really high-traffic area, very low visibility due to no, no lighting, and I know that we've addressed the. and I know that we've addressed the lighting issue, but I'm just trying to provide some justification for Vineyard Road. Thank you.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, discussion and action to review possible violation of city of Socorro media policy.
Mayor, it's number eighteen.
I thought we flipped flopped.
Yeah, we flipped.
Yeah, we flipped flopped, so twenty, twenty, eighteen became, uh, twenty-five, and twenty-five became eighteen.
Me too.
So we're at...
Ms. Retta?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, per the direction of Council, we went ahead and looked at what other cities do in terms of media inquiries or media releases. I am aware that all of you have been approached numerous times by the media and have had different experiences with the media. So, uh, went ahead and analyzed cities such as San Angelo, College Station, uh, even municipalities as large as Houston to see exactly what the role is that they do. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we provided a united front in terms of the messaging of what the city stood for and what they would like to see. Uh, based on what we viewed, we drafted a proposal for a media policy. In terms of interviewing and communication, we felt that it was something centralized that could be discussed with the district representative that the issue involved, as well as the mayor, as well as the city manager, and then the PIO as well. I'm not sure if you had any questions, if you had time to review the policy, um, had any specific questions or inquiries, and how to handle anything. This was something that I felt would be fair to everyone and include everyone's input in terms of issuing statements, interviews, press releases, things of that nature.
Mr. Perez?
Okay, so, bottom line, Ms. Retta, what, what, um, what is the protocol for city representatives like in San Angelo, or...
I definitely wanna make sure that none of you are caught off-guard, if you do get a call from the media, which sometimes has happened, they don't go through our office, they go through you directly, that you just refer them back to us, that way the city's in the know and in control of who's being contacted, when they're being contacted, having adequate information, knowing that there is an interview scheduled, so that I can go ahead and not only record it, I do record you guys when you get interviewed, but also keeping track for our social media policy as well. Anything that gets aired, we keep track of that.
So then for clarification, we still would have the opportunity to do interviews, but what the, what you're asking, what the protocol would be, is that we would funnel it back to you so that we can be better prepared to actually engage in an interview if we wanted to.
Yes and no. So the protocol they're proposing is that they're obviously gonna contact City Council, even when I ask them to contact my office, relay them back to me, I will go ahead and meet with the district representative that it's involving. For example, if it was in Buford, I would contact yourself, as well as Mayor, Rep. at Large and City Manager. We would go ahead and meet as a team, and I can go ahead and give a statement on your behalf, and that way we're in control of the situation as well.
Okay.
For interviews with City Council, different entities had different options. There was one where it's just the mayor, which we currently had. There's others where it's individual council member themselves. I know last time, we talked about not censuring anyone or muzzling anyone. Wanna make sure that we have everyone inclusive, and I can release a statement if you would like, I can do the interviews of PIO if you would like, I'm here to work with you guys, however you feel would be the best fit. What's before you is having me do the interview currently.
And it controls more of, um, our storyline, meaning we are all on the same page, and we're not providing the media different venues, the city stands together. Depending on who they interview, we all have the same objective to put out there.
And including the policing would be our services, such as if you feel that you would wanna change it and do your own interviews, I'm here to prep you as well and answer any questions. It's not something that would completely keep you out of the loop, there's different options at this point.
So you're saying we can, there's...
There's two options, you can, the one that's before you, is it going through me and I'll issue the statement?
I'm sorry. The, what we have in front of us...
Is me doing the interview.
Or we could go back and...
If you wish to delete the draft that's in front of you, you're able to ask me to go ahead and bring back another option. What's in front of you is a PIO to do all the interviews.
I mean...
Ms. Villalobos?
I would still like some freedom with the press, and, uh, it... I don't think it'll be all the time, but, you know, if I'm out there in my district, I'd like to be, I'd like for my people to know that I'm out there, you know? Um, I, I heard from my constituents telling me, not just here, but, um, I had a constituent come over yesterday and tell me that they felt like I wasn't representing, that I could not represent them. So, and this will just, um, you know, not help me either, you know?
And that wasn't the intent, the intent was, there's a lot of times where the media will give us a deadline and say, "I need it by two," or it will go as no comment. You all have jobs or responsibilities, this is a way to go ahead and quickly release an interview or a statement without them going to press saying they had no comment.
So the other choice would have both, either you, if we give you the choice, you know?
The what's before you right now is I would do the interview.
Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
I, I think, I think we need leeway. Um, but I like that you can prep 'em. You know, um... Anybody else? Any of us? Uh, prep us? Oh, I, I like the idea that we should need some leeway, but if any of us needs some prepping, you know, we should go through you still, so that we can have, uh, uh, yeah, so that we can be on track. Uh, you know, I think that, that, I, I like the, the whole thing as it is, you know? I just, I just feel that, you know, if, if there's something on somebody else's district, and, and they're, they're calling, because media does, uh, pick, you know? I think that because of our knowledge, you know, some of us have been longer than others, so we, we're privy to more stuff that, and, and, not to say that we're the smartest people, it's not that, it's nothing to do with that, it's just that we've been here, and we've seen a lot of stuff, maybe that's why they want, and I think that, like, for example, Ms. Villalobos stating is, she would like, I would like to, I think everybody would like it, but I think that if they do, I think we would redirect it back to you, and then we either make a decision to leave it to you or to us handling that interview. But I would like that if we do handle the interview, I think that, you know, he, uh, Mr. Retta could prep us and keep us in line to, to the...
Sounds like a win-win.
You know, I think that, so that we can have our same, uh, 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 the same tone and the same vision and the same, you know, for the cities.
Mr. Perez?
Well, I think that, um, it is a good idea to be prepped, because what, what happens sometimes is that the media will tell you, it'll be about this issue, but they've got some underlying issue to, to corner you on. And then, and then you're not prepped for it, you're, I mean, it's not that you don't, it's not that you're hiding anything, it's just you don't know, or, and it would be unwise to make any kind of statement, so it makes you look like you don't know, or you're hiding something. So, and, and so, I think that if we still have that, that leeway of having the, the, um, the interviews, and I think that also we need to just abide by, uh, a councilperson's agreement here that we don't speak on pending legal matters, I mean, that just, that would be, you know, nothing that, that...
I agree.
That we would approach.
And that was something that I did include in the draft before you, uh, release of sensitive information that is received through position, which was referenced to the Texas Penal Code, and that's also included in there for you as well.
So at this point, what we need to do, just...
I think you're asking for some revisions, um, in terms of media interview requests. I would just have the reporter go through my office, and then I can contact the, uh, the respective departments, which would either be the district, mayor, and rep. at Large, and then you guys would be able to direct me if you're gonna do the interview, or if you would like me to do it, that's what I'm hearing.
Just give us the option.
And, and, and to prep us.
Yeah, if we did, if we do decide to engage in the interview.
Yes, engage in the interview, prep us.
For a point of clarification, would I still follow the process of contacting mayor first, rep. at Large, and then the district representative?
I would, I don't have a problem.
I think you should go on that order and then send out an email with a follow-up in case no one answered the phone, that they know that there is an interview taking place.
So then we make a motion to approve, uh, with the, with the revisions, uh, given by Council.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-four, discussion and action to amend ordinance three twenty, Amendment four, Section five, public comment to allow, allow a speaker to sign up for public comment for only three agenda items with a two-minute limit each. I went ahead and posted this item in the agenda, and just kind of thinking for to give and take, uh, everybody complains that a minute and a half is too little, so we can go ahead and increase the time to two minutes, but at the same time, we don't wanna allow endless comment, so I think three items is, is a good number. That way, the constituents can still speak, but they can choose the three items that they feel are the most important. Um, if anybody has any other suggestions or recommendations, let us know. Mr. Duran?
At a lot of meetings, some people sign up for every single item. When they're called, no comment. I think they need to pick and choose what they really wanna talk about, not just get up and talk. Cause a lot of times, and it, it does waste a lot of, oh, pardon me, it uses up a lot of time uh, that we could use for better, for better items. So I'd like to make a motion to approve, um...
Second.
Can I finish my motion? Okay. To approve, um, to amend ordinance number three twenty, Amendment four, Section five, public comment to allow a speaker to sign up for public comment for only three item, three agenda items with a two-minute limit each.
Mr. Perez?
Um, I'm having a problem with this, because for as much as we don't wanna hear item, uh, that, you know, tangents on, on certain items, I think that we cannot, uh, prevent individuals from commenting. I mean, it is a public forum, for one. Two, um, you know, the, the time, about a minute and a half, I, came, it came as a happy medium, because it used to be three minutes per item, and it used to be three minutes per item on every item. And so, um, we, we pilled it down to a minute and a half for that same reason, because it was taking forever. And so, in an effort to expedite that, or, or streamline it, we went to a minute and a half and still be able to comment. And I think that it, you know, those people that have an honest, uh, interest in, in their item will speak to it, and, and we've heard it, I mean, it's, I, I think it's been working. Those other people that, that speak on every item are not here today. And so, and so I think that you're, um, I think we're overreaching. I think that we're, this is an issue of overkill, because they're not here. And we, we are diminishing the capacity of the individuals to speak on items that they may feel passionate about, and it may be, it may surpass three items, and it may be all items, I don't know, but I don't think that's, that, as a representative, that's not my call to make.
And to clarify, um, they would be able to sign up for a public comment and only three agenda items, so we still have some decency. Mr. Hold on, Ms. Villalobos was next.
I completely disagree, I agree with Mr. Mr. Perez. I, I, constituents have come up to me, I, I understand there's several individuals, but we can't punish the rest of the constituents for three individuals. Right, exactly. So, um, I do agree, maybe we can increase it to two minutes. We have constituents that speak very slow. We can't, you know, they, they tell me, you know, I couldn't get what I wanted to get out, I mean, I'm not a recorder, I can't, you know, speak faster, and so you might wanna consider that. I, I would consider, I mean, I would definitely go, uh, approve, you know, um, two minutes. Um, maybe we should, maybe think about if we had, think about maybe moving some items around to the next meeting, instead of putting too many items on there. If, if we know that the topic is going to take, we know for a fact that the topic is gonna take longer than usual, we can, we can consider that. That's what I have to say.
Mr. Duran?
We also have the right to suspend the rules. If we see that somebody, um, if it's a hot item and a lot of people wanna speak on it, we can suspend the rules. That way, everybody can have their say. Cause I know that the Rancho Miraval problem, everybody wants to speak. And there's, you know, but how many people signed up for all the items tonight? How many people signed up for more than three? I mean, it's just, um, if, if the need arises, we'll have the right to suspend the rules and allow them to speak, cause I, I, I am not against stopping everybody from speaking. That's far from it. But by the same token, a lot of people do take advantage of that, and, you know, I'm tired of hearing no comment, no comment. So...
And that's for, that's for my vote, that comes in, for those that abuse, and, and it's a waste of time, but, yes. Um, so, we're adults here. If we're gonna sign up for every topic, then get up and talk about it. This no-comment thing is a waste of time, it's a waste of time for me, and I'm sure it's for you guys as well. So, let's be adults about it, you are gonna sign up, fine, but get up and talk about it.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Jim? You okay? Okay, um, um, my question is to you. Do we, is there anything in the books that say we have to give them a time to talk?
No, you can conduct the entire...
What was that again?
You can conduct the entire meeting without taking public comment.
One more time.
There's no, the public does not have a right to speak in a public...
Okay. So the one I hear, I'm gonna say this, guys, we do have, we do have a responsibility to our constituents, to hear their concerns, because this is the only time that they might come up and talk to us. Okay? I know that rule, because, Jim, you know I've talked to you about that many times. If, if it was for me, I'm the one that get heckles the most, okay? I'm the one that people come up here and tell me all these fallacies, lies, in other words, and, and, and stuff, you know? But I've never stopped someone from speaking, because that's their right, I mean, that's not their right here, and I want you to understand that, they don't have that right, that privilege. We give it to them, because we owe it to them. Okay? That's what I want you to understand. This is a forum for them to come and speak their minds to us, because we're telling them, we need your input. Because not everybody can see you at a Walmart or at a McDonald's, and I should get paid for that, and, and stuff. But that's what I'm trying to say, is that people need to understand, and we need to understand that we need to let them talk. I don't like it, I really don't. You know, when we censure chip people, you know, I don't like to be censured. Why are we gonna muzzle them too? That's something that we need to think about before, what this reads, and, just to clarify, is three agenda items, correct, with two minutes? Because I heard a minute and a half later on.
So we have public comment, and then three agenda items?
With two minutes, per item.
Currently, it's a minute and a half, and all agenda items are open.
Okay. That's, that's my speed.
Mayor, we have a speaker, Miriam Cruz?
Um, I don't have control over what agenda items are in the agenda, I don't have any control of that. So the fact that you would try to limit me or anyone else to three items is a problem, because you all know, I, I have never signed up for every single one. There are certain individuals that have, and it is a little annoying. There are certain individuals that have, and it is a little annoying that they say no comment. But you know what? They say it a lot faster and very quickly, and it doesn't bother me. As much, as much as it bothers me that some of you all talk in circles sometimes, sometimes repeat what someone else already said. And, and sometimes making the meetings longer for no real good reason other than we're all nodding our heads and saying the same thing. I don't mind, I've never, I'm never going to ask you guys not to discuss an item. Why? Because I don't sometimes know what the item is, and I want to hear your discussion. And I want to hear you guys talk it out. Les voy a decir, para los que no saben, los que no están entendiendo en inglés, que es lo que están tratando de hacer. Quieren limitar, que, en que, para que, cuáles temas podemos hablar. O quieren limitar para las tres cosas. Aunque hoy tenemos veintisiete cosas que nos tuvimos haber hablado. Entonces, no creo que es, es justo que traten de limitarnos. Quieren aumentar el tiempo a dos minutos, está bien. Yo no tengo problema porque a veces me caigo antes de que tengo que. But I don't, I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's, maybe it's a privilege that you have given us. But let me tell you, if you take it away, we're probably going to vote you all out. And we're going to put people in that are going to let us talk. Thank you.
Renee Rodriguez?
Mayor, before I say my vote, I'm going to say this. Many people have come up and addressed this all the time. And like I said before, I'm not a pushover, and neither are we. Doesn't scare me when people come up saying we're going to vote you out. Doesn't scare me. You know, when the time comes, so be it. But it doesn't matter, we have to do our due diligence and do the work at hand. Okay? We're going to continue to fight, we're still going to continue to do the things that we have to do and address issues. Have confidence in us. What was the, can you?
The motion is to approve to amend the ordinance to three agenda items and the public comment, with agenda items being two minutes.
No.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
No.
Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Para mi gente ahí atrás, yo no estoy de acuerdo de que les, les limiten a hablar. Entonces, y quiero que entiendan eso, y no, absolutely not.
Item number eighteen, discussion and action to approve, approve at-large representative Renee Rodriguez and District Four representative Ivan Colombia Lobos to attend an exclusive workshop meeting with the, with the mayor and council of Terrell, Texas on April eighth, ninth, and tenth, two thousand eighteen, as opposed to only the eighth and ninth as previously approved.
Council?
Ms. Yallos?
I'm sorry. We had, we had to amend it because I, I guess I looked at the wrong calendar, and I sincerely apologize. I thought I had looked at the right, right dates. At this time, right, unfortunately, my phone had not been working for a couple of days. I believe we, we fixed the problem, but I, I'm not, Mr. Rodriguez, I'm not sure if they have anything for us on, on Tuesday. At this point, I don't know. I did ask Mr. Grady to call me back. Or actually, I emailed him because my phone was not working properly, and I don't know what his phone number was. And he did not get back to me. So tonight, I'm asking that if we can get both dates, or how many days, it's three days? If there's nothing on Tuesday, we'll be coming back on Monday. Is that okay? Or do we have to be very specific?
Well, we have to make the arrangements tomorrow because you would leave this Sunday.
And I believe I can get to that in the morning.
Okay, I mean, we just have to make sure that we get it. Because we don't want to stay till the tenth, pay in a hotel, and then not get our cancellation back.
And that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Such a short notice.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to avoid. I'm trying to avoid that.
Bless you. Sorry.
Mr. Duran?
I think if we book the tickets tomorrow, they're going to be extremely expensive because of the short period. I think probably what would be in the best interest is to postpone it until we can get a better deal and you can nail down the exact dates. And also, I think we need to go as a, as a city. According to our charter, the mayor shall be the official head of the city government. And rather than just a couple, and I think Mr. Ochoa, who is doing our incentive program, and Mr. Casciano, who would be able to advise us as to any financial items that may come up, I think they should be included too. And any, any member of council. A lot of the commercial end that's going to be coming into Socorro is on Mr. Nevadas and my district. So I think I'd like to attend also. But I think we need to postpone it until you find out an exact date and where we can get a better rate on the flights. And I think that would be, and that way, the mayor would lead our delegation as they have their, their mayor is the lead on their delegation. This way, we could be a united front with all participants. Mr. Ochoa, who's, who's doing our incentive program, he could give us a lot of more insight. And Mr. Casciano, who's our financial guru, could give us a lot of more, more insight. And I think we can get more out of it if we, if we do it that way.
Ms. Yallos?
And I would love that. That's why we gave you the opportunity last time to, we said it would be, it would be open to everybody. And I would have loved that for all of us to come because the city of Terrell is rolling out the carpet for us. They're already in place, they're already ready, they even have a historical breakfast for us at a historical place. They're waiting for us, they were hoping that we would all come. But unfortunately, I guess most of you could not come last time. And you have to understand, the, these, these council people are taking time off from their work, from their regular work, to accommodate us at least Monday. So, and it starts, it starts right at seven-thirty a.m. They're going to pick us up at the hotel in Terrell. They have a, they already have their historical bus picking us up. We're not spending any, any money on, on renting a car because we're probably just going to get a Uber, Uber to the hotel. And, and they're going to be bussing us around. So that's one. I did look at the tickets today, Ms. Norma showed me the tickets today. They are three, three-twenty-eight, three-twenty-four, something like that. And, I mean, I'd hate to tell them no when I already told them yes because we had voted on this last time. We're just trying to amend the, the dates. That's what, what, that's what this item is for. I would have loved for all of us to have been there, absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Duran?
I have a little problem with, this is a city function. This should have been handled by either our city manager or the mayor. It's not specific to District Four. And when you tell us that we'd love to everybody to have gone at the last meeting, there was no invitation for everybody to go.
Oh, yes, sir, I see.
I have the floor, please, thank you. So, I've had a chance to look at it, and I think we need to bring staff with us. And I think we need to go as a united city. And our, and to exclude our city manager and to exclude the mayor from it, I think would be wrong. I think that if she is able to go, if Mr. Nevadas is able to go, because it does affect his district too and my district, he can't, but I can. And I think Mr. Ochoa and Mr. Casciano should also be included in this. Because this is a city function, not one district function. So I think we all need to, and if we can, if you don't know exactly how long it's going to take, I think you should direct staff to get in touch with them in Terrell, Texas, and find out exactly what's going to happen. And then they could better pick probably a better date to, to make this happen that way. And then have a better understanding of what is going to happen. So we can get as much out of it as we can.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Once again, this is an attempt from Mr. Duran to not let us go on this trip. Because we, she gave you the opportunity last time, you didn't take it. Now you're just trying to say, oh, we need to go as a delegate. No, we don't. No, we don't. Okay? If you want to do that, then bring a policy that says we're going to go as a delegate. If not, then don't. One of the things that I will say is that, we're, she just wants to add another day because we don't know. From what I was told, I was told something different. She's bringing it up because she got that wrong, the dates wrong. Okay? Now, we don't have to say the staff is going because that's an administrative function. If you don't understand what your role is, then I should suggest you read up on your stuff. Because if they're going to go, that's an administrative function. They don't have to come up here, and we don't have to say who's going or not because that's an administrative function. Okay? Now, second of all, guys, we already approved it. Okay? All we're, all she's asking is for an extra day. If we don't have to, we're going to come back, and tomorrow she'll find out. That's all she's doing, that's all we said. We already approved this item, she's just adding another day, just in case. If it doesn't, and we don't have to stay, believe me, I asked, I will come back Monday. That's all we're asking. Because what we were told is they were going to let us, show us all of this stuff, from exception to conception to action. Then the second day, they were going to take us to their four hundred, their four thousand acres. They were going to show us exactly, and show us all of the companies that are going to be there and tell us what and how the process was. Okay? That's all. We're making a big stink about it because now we feel hurt that, oh, the mayor didn't go, you know? Once again, once again, this is for the city. I don't care about credit, okay? Because if that's what you're looking for, then so be it. I don't care. But what I will say is this, this has nothing to do with personal agendas, okay? We want to better our city, our community, we want an economical plan that it could be sustained. Okay? Now, we're going to postpone it, and heavens knows when they have the other opportunity. So what I'm saying, guys, is we're only adding a day just in case. That is all.
Ms. Yallos?
Ms., Mr. Durante, I'm not adding a day, am I? I'm just switching?
No, you're adding a day.
I am, I'm adding a day, okay, I'm sorry.
You had, you said eight and nine.
I had said eight and nine.
And eight and nine, and then you added the ten.
Okay. So, when we voted last time, they didn't have an agenda, an tentative agenda. This is where we were off. And so they sent me this agenda that they put together, and I, I provided it to our, our, our city manager. And it, the thing is, is that Monday, they want to start right at seven-thirty. I'm sorry, they want to have breakfast right at seven-thirty at the historical place. They have speakers coming. And on, so this is why I had to add the Sunday. But I might be getting rid of the Tuesday because it's, it might be just Sunday to get there, Monday to, to attend early in the morning, and then possibly come back Monday night if they don't have anything for us on Tuesday. I was not able to clarify because the agenda here, the, the tentative agenda only speaks about Monday. That's all. So, we might not be, not be adding an extra day. This has already been voted on. And for clarification, and I think some constituents here were shaking their heads, I invited everybody last time. Maybe you didn't hear it, but I said this is for everybody. And, and, and nobody else wanted to go, so, you know, you can't force you.
Mr. Duran?
The item from the last time, it doesn't exist because it was wrong. That's why it was brought in again today, to get the proper dates.
And it wasn't my doing.
To get the proper dates. Now, you're telling me that we didn't have an agenda before, so we were, I mean, to me, you were flying blind. You were just going out there because of those dates. Now, Jim, Mr. Martinez, is there a problem having staff go to better understand what's going on? Okay, like, there's nothing, contrary to what Mr. Rodriguez is saying, there's nothing wrong with having the people that are going to put together the plan to be there. You know, the, 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 these people understand better than anybody here how to do it. Mr. Ochoa was with the City of Las Cruces, and he understands how to put this program together. Mr. Casciano is well-versed in, in the financial area of it. I mean, they may propose programs to us that we can't afford, and he'll be able there to, to guide us. But as far, this is a whole new agenda item, has nothing to do with the last time. So I would, I would just, I mean, Mr., I would like them to go, and anybody else on council who wishes to go, to get a better understanding of what's going on.
Hold on, hold on, I have the floor first.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Ms. Durante, who of our administrate is going to go with us?
Mr. Casciano. Just because Mr. Ochoa is not available, this kind of.
Thank you. So like I said, guys, all we're doing is adding a day just in case. We will know, she will know tomorrow morning if we needed that extra day or not. Because tomorrow, we're going to book it everything. All we're saying is, we just want to cover our bases because there was a, an error. You know, all I'm, that's all I'm saying. It's just, we're adding a day just in case. We're not going to take it if we don't need it, that's all.
Ms. Yallos?
Just for clarifications, again, please understand, this agenda was just sent to me. So it was after we had voted on it. I hasn't, it doesn't have my doing, I'm not making this, this meeting. They are, and they're prepared for us. And we shouldn't be talking about this because, you know, last thing I want to do is go to Terrell, Texas and tell them, you know what, one of our council people had a problem with it, and now we can't go. When they've, when, obviously, they took the time already to get, to, to show us, to explain to us how they grew their economy, their economy development there. And they're doing it for free. You know, they don't have to do this, they're, they're wining us, they're dining us, that's exactly what they said. You, don't worry about it, you know, just get here. We're, we're excited to see you. They, they wished there was more coming, and so did I. And I did, Mr. Duran, I opened it up, that's the first thing I said. I said, it's for every, it's not just for me. The only reason Mr. Rodriguez and I got involved was because we actually spoke to the gentleman, and he invited us. And I thought it was, I wasn't thinking of who was going, I was thinking of, let's get this city going. That's what I'm thinking, that's what I'm focused on. Not bickering over this right here, and, yes, I apologize. I, I honestly thought we could fly in on Monday, and we would, we would be, you know, meeting with them Monday afternoon, and then concluding Tuesday. And they, that wasn't the deal. They sent me an, an tentative agenda, and I had to put it back on the, on the, the item back on the agenda. That's all.
Mr. Duran?
Do we have a motion? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we do go, and that anybody that would like to go within council is, is welcome. And, let me see, where's the eye? Okay. To approve, change it from at-large and District Four to any council member who wishes to attend, and Mr. Casciano, because he's not mentioned on here, on the dates, the dates that are, that you had planned.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
For those that are going to go, please let Norma know first thing tomorrow morning. Please let her know so I can tell also the, Terrell, Texas, that we're coming, which is awesome. I, I really wanted all of us to go. Yes. I, I really wanted all of us to go. Yes.
Mayor, can I, I'll go with it. If enough members choose to go, it's a good constituency, or I think you've got a problem, because it sounds like you've got a little discussions in the business there. So, I, I understand if any, if anybody who's emotional, anybody who wants to go can't. I suggest it would be, it should be fewer than a quarter.
Fewer than a quarter? Okay.
Do we need to amend the motion to say fewer than a quarter?
Not, not if only three people said they wanna go.
Okay. Item number twenty-seven, discussion and action.
We have to vote. Oh, we didn't?
Item number twenty-six, discussion and action to approve paving of range war.
We didn't vote.
We just did.
No, we didn't.
You just said yes.
Did we vote?
We voted, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could. What are you talking about? We just voted.
Oh.
Item number twenty-six, discussion and action to approve paving of range war, Sudan, Rye, Supima, Juri, and Cotton Valley Estate subdivision in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred and ninety-five.
That's what I said, we have a, just wait until we have, yeah.
Mr. Nevadas?
So, just make the motion.
Make the motion to wait until we have a plan. And, and postpone for the moment.
Second.
Second?
We already have a second.
Oh, okay.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Navarres?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-seven, discussion and action to place a metal guard rail from corner to corner at the end of Flor Blanca.
We have a, we have a picture. I've had this constituent, and I, she's, she's come up to me several times. Do you, you guys, you guys saw the picture here? At the end of the street, um, uh, Flor Blanca, um, as you can see, it's wide open, it's dirt. And, um, everybody uses that road, uh, to, uh, go four-wheeling. Every kind of vehicle is there, even, uh, you know, big, uh, uh, pickup trucks. And it's very dangerous in that street. They, they speed out of there, they speed in, so they can, uh, go four-wheeling. And all they're asking is for a guard rail from corner to corner, so they can stop that traffic from going into that, um, um, dirt. I, I don't know if there's any constituents here from there. I, I know the, the one constituent that, uh, uh, she had to, they called her into work. She was gonna come today. So, I'm speaking in her behalf. Um, and that's all she's asking for, a guard rail, so, from corner to corner, so, there's no, um, motorcycles that go through there, or bikes, or, um, and, um, you know, they have to find another route. She's just trying to keep that street safe, and it's, it's very dangerous.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Does the sta- our staff have any recommendations about this?
I mean, now, we can say it's a fifty-five, uh, foot guard rail, and it takes about four crew members, two days. Cost is about a thousand two hundred.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Navarres?
Yes.
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lobos?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive?
Second.
Mayor, I, I would suggest, because we've got some, some missing parts of the, of the executive session agenda, I would suggest the mo- motion should be amended to go into, to read, motion to go into executive session in addition to what's on the agenda to, for item number thirty-two and item number thirty-five to consult with your board.
Okay, I'll, my motion to go into executive, and to add items from thirty-two and thirty-five to consult with city attorney.
Still second.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Navarres?
Yes.
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Yes.
Eight thirty-eight, executive session?